Good evening, everyone. The call to order this meeting of the West Palm Beach City Commission. Today is Monday, October 6, 2023, and the time is 5:00 P. M. We will start this meeting off, as we do all of our meetings, with a moment of silence. Ask that you keep in mind the families, friends, of all of those who have lost their lives or are being held hostage in the Middle East. And that's all I'll say for now on that matter. A moment of silence, please. Madam President, can you lead us in a pledge of allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I will remind everyone of the rules of civility and decorum which govern this body. Officials shall be recognized by the chair and should not interrupt the speaker. Public comments shall be addressed to the city commission as a whole and not to any individual in the dais or in the audience. Displays of anger, rudeness, ridicule, impatience, lack of respect, and personal attacks are strictly prohibited. Unauthorized remarks from the audience, stamping of feet, whistles, yells, and similar demonstrations should not be permitted. Please govern yourselves accordingly, as offenders may be removed from the meeting. Anyone desiring to address the commission shall file a written request, complete a comment card for each agenda item, the person which is to address, which shall include the person's full name, address, and the number of agenda item. And the card is to be delivered prior to consideration of the matter on the agenda. If you don't follow those guidelines, your card may not be accepted. Thank you for your attention to that matter. Madam City Administrator, do we have any additions, deletions, reorganization of the agenda?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. We will start with the consent calendar, items 6.1 through 6.9. Commissioners, do you have any comments, questions on consent? All right, hearing none. I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move acceptance of consent, agenda items 6.1 through 6.9, as submitted.
Thank you. Is removed. Is there a second?
Second.
Removed and seconded. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 7.1, Resolution Number 286-23, condemning the unprovoked attack by Hamas against Israel and its citizens, supporting Israel's right to defend itself from indiscriminate violence and terrorism, and supporting the right of the state of Israel to exist as a sovereign, independent nation. Madam City Attorney, do you want to introduce this? I mean, I asked you to prepare this resolution. I think its meaning is quite self-apparent. I don't know if there's anything you wanted to add to the discussion, anything in terms of preparation, but this was something that was very important that we...
Yes, Mayor, we certainly received the request from your office to bring forward a resolution for the commission to consider to declare the acts invalid and to show our support as a body to Israel and to denounce the actions that are going on currently. We certainly open it up for discussion or comment by the board and would request that you approve Resolution Number 286-23.
Thank you. You know, last week I issued a formal statement for me as the mayor opposing the terrorist attacks in Israel. I thought it would be important for this body as the legislative body of the city of West Palm Beach to adopt a resolution condemning the unprovoked attacks on Israel. My statement and the substance of my statement was that that unprovoked attack was a cowardly, and that was a term I used intentionally, act of terrorism. Cowardly because they struck out at women, children, innocent citizens. It's one thing if you have a fight, but take it to your counterpart. If you are an army, if you're military, take your fight to the other military, the other armed forces. Don't, don't attack innocent people. And that's, to me, the killing and kidnapping, rape, beheading of innocent people is just totally beyond the pale and unacceptable. Even more sad, given that the attack came on the Jewish Sabbath and during a Jewish holiday. But the more I learned about the attacks, they actually hit me personally. Some of you may recall that in March of 2022, I had the pleasure of traveling to Israel as a guest of the AJC, American Jewish Committee, with a group of other mayors, there were about 12 of us. And we visited a kibbutz. Those of you may know a kibbutz is a communal living enclave where families live together peacefully. That was near the Gaza Strip. Tragically, that very kibbutz, Kfar Azah, was one of the first attacked by the terrorists. Entire families, elderly people, children, toddlers, even babies, were murdered in their homes. Some still in bed. Babies and toddlers were found decapitated in Kfar Azah. The death toll in that one kibbutz, where I and my fellow mayors welcomed so warmly, even into the home, as you saw in the pictures there, there was a woman who was addressing us. She was a resident of the kibbutz. She invited us into her home. We sat around our dining room table. And she talked to us about life, living in a kibbutz, the constant fear of rockets. She was the mother of four children under 12 and shared with us how she had to train her children from the time they could walk to learn how to get to the bomb shelter if they heard the sirens. She never wanted to have the guilt of being at a bomb shelter after the doors were locked and not all of her children being with her. So in that kibbutz, the death toll there is 52, with at least seven kidnapped and taken to Gaza by the terrorists, their fates were unknown. I totally expect, this woman who welcomed us into her home, that she and her family probably are no longer with us. The terrorists burned down the homes of the victims, in many cases with the victims still inside. Despicable acts, as I said, by cowards. At least 1,500 people have died in Israel since the conflict erupted, 30 of them Americans. As far as we know, the terrorists are still holding about 200 hostages, including women, the elderly, children, and babies. It's a heartbreaking event, and it's not over. Such incidents are a stark reminder of the importance of peace. And I know there are political differences between the Palestinian people and the Jewish people. But these acts, killing, raping, mutilating innocent people, innocent citizens, in my view, are totally beyond the pale. Whose only crime, if you will, those who were murdered, raped, beheaded, whose only crime, but they happen to be Jewish. And so I hope commissioners that you will stand with me in supporting this resolution. It is important for our city, I believe, to make this statement in no uncertain terms. We will not be, I do not want the city to be silent on this issue during this moment. And hence, I bring this to your attention. Happy to hear from Commissioner Ward.
Thank you, Mayor. That was emotional, and I'm trying to keep myself together. I didn't realize you had that connection. And I think a lot of people, some may look at it from an outside perspective and say something's happening far away. But I've grown up in an area that I was surrounded by all different cultures and backgrounds and religions, and it hits home with every single person that I know, Jewish or non-Jewish, about the impact of what this says around the world. And there's a phrase I've heard repeated, I myself used, when discussing hostile international matters. And it's one man's terrorist is another man's freedom fighter. And I think for those in an educated background, it's to kind of look and discuss, okay, where was the person coming from that did this hostility? It was never meant as a justification for terrorism, for brutality, for rape. And I feel like it really, it saddens me that this many local organizations, student organizations, took the time to protest in support of the Palestinian people at a time when we should have all been together mourning a despicable act. There's times to look at international perspectives, 40s, decades later, the creation. Now is not the time. The time was to mourn and support those who have been impacted by this and look at how we can do better and be better. Just locally, it brought me back to months ago when my neighborhoods were getting targeted with disgusting propaganda. It happened here, and then it happened in Wellington. And luckily, we got together and found the perpetrators, some of them quickly. But I remember being at a friend's house and then finding it when they were walking out the door and turning around and going, is this really happening in West Palm? And now that I'm on a, you know, I'm part of the Team West Palm Beach, I almost took it offensively, like, I can't believe that people in this area would do that. And so if we don't all act and stand up and say, hey, this behavior is not right, hating a person for how they were born, it's not right. And it saddens me that so many educated people are taking the time to stand up for Palestinians when absolutely, I hope that as few Palestinian people are injured during a war, and it's hard to not injure anybody that's innocent during a war. But it wasn't the time for that. It is not the time for that. An eye for an eye makes the whole world blind. And unfortunately, we have too many people that are pushing that mentality, and it's really sad. So thank you for bringing this forward, and I am happily supporting it.
Commissioner Fox.
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to say thank you for bringing this to us. I am very happy that we can speak as a united voice, as the city, as leaders, and as neighbors, especially for the horrifying acts that we've seen go on. It's also, I think, hitting many of our neighbors locally. I've heard from people who work in Jewish organizations that are scared to go to work, people who are afraid to wear jewelry or yarmulkes or other clothing for fear of being singled out. And so I look around, and I think that in Palm Beach County in South Florida, we have such a large Jewish population that if people can't feel safe here, then where can they feel safe? So I am very supportive of this measure to make sure that people, our neighbors, they know where we stand, that we do not tolerate hate, we condemn this violence, and that we will support our Jewish friends in any way we can. So thank you very much.
Commissioner Lambert.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for bringing this up, for our support here today. As the war and the violence in Israel continues, I want to express my deep support for those that are dealing with the devastation and the death and ongoing uncertainty. It was really powerful this weekend to see so many West Palm Beach residents and those from throughout the county to show up in our downtown to show solidarity with our Jewish friends and to rally together to show support. I think that as leaders, we must stand together against hate and against terrorism and unite to protect civilians and children from being taken hostage and being hurt. So I'm proud to support this resolution tonight and look forward to seeing what else we can do to show our support.
Thank you. Commissioner Bedouzi.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'm just going to speak briefly that I, there's really nothing that I could say that would be more heartfelt than your words, and I thank you for bringing this forward to us today.
Madam President.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to say that I stand in rebuke of all terrorism. And I absolutely stand with this body and with that, so I'd like to make a motion.
Before you make the motion, we do have some cards. But I'll be happy to let you do that once we hear the speakers. Ari Fixler, Ira Jacobson, and Melissa Berenson. If you could approach upon, Mr. Fixler.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Commission. It's a very, very tough time.
Could you state your name and address for the record, please, sir?
Ari Fixler, from the Holocaust Museum. Very, very tough, disappointing time. Who would think something like this would happen so many years after the Holocaust? I can just tell you from my perspective, I spent a year in Israel post-high school, and my exposure to Hamas was when they did suicide bombings, sometimes three times a week, in Jerusalem. And when the people were gathering the body parts, they found nails and rat poison that was put by Hamas in those bombs. So these are the people we're talking about. And it's very disappointing that so many years after that, we're finding reports, including from the CIA and others, with the word "responsible." They felt Hamas is becoming responsible, a responsible government body for Gaza. We all know it's a ruse. It was just a play. They took all their cement, used it for tunnels. Just this morning, the U.N. said food and fuel is missing. That was just borne in from Egypt. This is not a government that can represent the Arab people at all. I would appreciate, in the future, if resolutions can clearly state that Hamas must go. It's not a body that's conducive for the Arab people. I wanted to highlight the extreme importance of doubling down in your efforts to make sure we close the gap of the deficit that exists here in West Palm in terms of Holocaust education. We know this. We know this from the school district. We know this from many other bodies. And it's hard for other institutions that are not Holocaust institutions to take this responsibility. I've been hearing that today even. They don't feel comfortable. They don't want to become a target. There needs to be a separate Holocaust institution. And what this body can do immediately is follow the example that was done in Orlando. You can immediately give a mandate to the CRA to start looking for a location, a safe location, that we can put our state-of-the-art exhibits. Thank you.
Thank you. Ira Jacobson.
Ira Jacobson. First of all, I'd like to thank you, appreciate all your comments. It's been a trying time. I did lead, I co-led one of the rallies in West Palm Beach. And my daughter-in-law's Israeli, and, like I said, it's been a tough time, but I have to tell you, I'm tired of standing at this podium because last time I was here, it has to do with antisemitism. And we could talk about what's going on in Israel, but how about we talk about what's going on, you mentioned the students at campuses, or in Florida. Three years ago, my rabbi's wife in Miami, my rabbi's, my rabbi's wife's father in Miami was going to services. Shot in the head, dead, killed. Antisemitism in the state of Florida is rampant. You talked about having the pamphlets sent out. Thank God for the police, because imagine having to go to services every time. And I back the blue. They're great, but they're there to protect us. But maybe we need to discuss how to educate the young people in this state so we wouldn't have to have these resolutions. They would know. The education, you know, we have a Holocaust course for an hour. That's great. But we're here putting out a statement. Why? Anybody that has a heart would know, you know, look what's going on. And we're sitting here on a Monday evening, let's come up with a statement. Well, let me tell you about Palm Beach County. Palm Beach County has the largest percentage of Jews in the county anywhere in the United States. In the United States. We have Holocaust museums all across the country, Tampa, Miami, zero here, nothing. Where else can you educate a young, middle of school, elementary? Just showing them the history and the past. I know we're going to write, here's Hamas. Okay, great. We know it. You know, it's been going on for so long, terrorism. I mean, if you want to Google what the churches in Africa have been destroyed from these terrorists on that side, I think last year, and I could be wrong. I don't, it was 100 to 150 churches. It's not only the Hebrew Jews of Israel, but maybe we should concern ourselves about what's going on here, the antisemitism in colleges, on campuses, that we can't walk to services without a protector. You know what that feeling is? So, yeah, we can worry what's going on in Yerushalayim, Eretz Yisrael, Ruch Hashem, but maybe we could do a little more education here. And how we cannot have a Holocaust museum in this county is besides me.
Thank you. Melissa Berenson.
Hello and thank you. My name is Melissa Berenson, and I appreciate you allowing me to speak today. And I thank you for bringing this resolution up and for everyone's support on it. I would like to say, "Never again" starts with "me." And "never again" is "now." And we all have to stand together, not only to condemn Hamas and support Israel, but we must support our Jewish community here in Palm Beach County and West Palm Beach. It is so important. My children go to school with police cars sitting in, in full SWAT gear of their security. That's just not appropriate for young children to have to go to school and to see that. They should be able to go and feel safe. And education is key in this. I think all the protests that are going on around the country that are pro-Hamas and pro-Palestinian are due to a poor lack of education in our educational system, not just here in West Palm and Palm Beach County, but across the country. And when you support or allow the support of the oldest hatred in the world, the Jewish hatred, it then spreads to other groups. It's not then just the Jews. It's then the blacks. It's then the LGBTQ. If you can help to educate people to not allow Jew hatred, and that's what it is, it's not antisemitism, it is Jew hatred. If we can stand up for this population and condemn these terrorist acts and condemn the violence that we experience on a daily level, just walking out our doors and having to take our children to school, then we can also stand together to defeat other hatreds. But you first must defeat the hatred that every other group hates, and that is the Jew. Whether it's Black Lives Matter hates the Jews, Arabs hate the Jews. There are fundamental religions everywhere that hate the Jews. That's one thing that all the groups have in common is hating the Jews. So if we can work on educating people, I think we can solve the problem even better and then spread it out. And that is only done through education. And I would really love for the city of West Palm Beach, I'm happy to work with anybody who wants to talk or come up with ideas on how to have a museum and an educational facility here to teach our children about Holocaust education and human rights. It is so important.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. That's all the cards. Madam President, you said you wanted to make a motion.
Yes, sir. I move approval of Resolution Number 286-23.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Removed and seconded. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition. Motion carries unanimously. We'll now take a moment because I understand this name tags are reversed on your, so we need to understand who you are. Thank you. Okay. Item 7.2, Resolution Number 272-23, approving conveyance by the city of an 8.61-foot wide strip of property associated with 324 DeTura Street in exchange for perpetual easement to the city for public sidewalk, fixtures, utilities, and other public improvements. Madam City Attorney.
Yes, Mayor. This item is being brought forward at the request of Mr. Harvey Oyer. It is, in essence, a piece of property that was originally held by the owners of 324 DeTura Street but became property of the city by recording of a maintenance map following the Florida statutes. This resolution will transfer the property back to the property owner but yet retain perpetual easement so that the public right-of-way is still maintained and that there's pedestrian access and use therein. I believe Mr. Oyer has a short presentation if you would like it, but otherwise, you can go forward if you choose.
Does anyone desire a short presentation from Harvey Oyer? I don't see anybody chomping at the bit. So what we'll do without the presentation from Mr. Oyer, is he here?
Yes, sir.
I didn't even see you. Okay. No, no, I'm not asking you to do a presentation.
No, no presentation?
No, no presentation.
Just wanted to make sure I was present.
I just wanted to make sure you heard my complimentary remarks before, yeah.
I am present and accounted for.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Any questions, comments on this item? Hearing none. I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number 272-23.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Removed and seconded. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Oyer, for your presence. Item 7.3, Resolution Number 271-23, approving a retail lease agreement between Tabak West Palm Beach, Inc. and the city of West Palm Beach for the lease of retail space located at 505-509 Clemata Street. Ms. Fariah.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, members of the public. Jennifer Fariah, Housing and Community Development Director. As you are aware, the city of West Palm Beach owns real property located at 505-509 Clemata Street. And over the last 10 years, the property has been leased to Tabak West Palm Beach, Inc. And it's currently being utilized by the existing tenant for the operations of a small coffee shop and a casual dining location. Many of us here are very familiar with Subculture Coffee, which is one of the restaurants that is being operated out of the premises. And in accordance with the existing lease agreement, the tenant was required to notify the city prior to October 23, 2022, meaning a year ago, of its intent to renew the existing lease. The tenant failed to do so. Therefore, the current lease terminates in a few days or on October 24, 2023. Under the direction of this governing body... Under the direction of this governing body, as a result of a discussion at a mayor-commission work session, staff was directed to move forward with a new, with a negotiation of a new lease for a five-year term with the existing tenant at a market rent rate. With that said, I just want to remind the commission that all of our leases, we approach them all, and we approach all negotiations following the policies outlined in the city's lease management policy, which was adopted via ordinance in 2019. And with that, I'll provide some of the summarized terms under the proposed lease agreement. Obviously, we're going to be leasing the interior space for a period of five years. The base rent is going to be at $35.70 per square foot, or $6,643 per month. So how do we come up with that number? So in accordance with Section 231 of the city's Code of Ordinances and the city's real lease management policy, the lease rent shall be no less than 85% of the fair market rent. We were able to commission a market rent analysis by Anderson Carr, I'm sorry, Anderson Carr, Anderson and Carr, in which they stated that the market rate rent was at $42 per square foot. Based on our negotiations, we were able to negotiate it at $35.70, which is 85% of the market rate. Again, it's all within the policies outlined in our ordinances. Every, for, there'll be a 3% annual increases through years two through five. The tenant will still be responsible for any property taxes, any sales taxes, or any taxes that are related to the lease premises. They will be required to provide a security deposit equal to once a month rent after execution of the lease. They're also required to pay for any utilities, any maintenance costs, and to ensure that the property is maintained in a good, neat, and sanitary condition. They are also responsible for carrying out any applicable insurances, including commercial, general liability insurance, workers' comp, and so forth. The city will be responsible for any structural, mechanical, or infrastructure repairs. We're also going to be responsible for managing the lease and the overall management of that lease. I want to point out that obviously the tenant has agreed to all of the proposed terms and that we have been able to fully negotiate a lease agreement, hence why we are here before this governing body. So with that said, I respectfully ask for your approval of this resolution. My presentation is now concluded, I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Ms. Ferriell, are there any questions, comments? Madam President?
At the conclusion of a lease, do we term, do we standardly communicate with the leasing and ask for anything, or do we simply bake it into the lease itself, requiring that they advise us of their intentions? What is, what's the standard practice at the conclusion?
Well, under, under the specific lease, it's only a five-year lease, we're following the guidance that was provided by the commission, which was a five-year lease. After that, there are no renewal options under this lease, I want to confirm that, yes. So after five years, we will be required to then follow the direction of the city commission and the mayor, whether we, you know, move forward with negotiating with, you know, another tenant, doing an ITN, doing some sort of competitive process, that'll be determined at that time prior to the lease expiring. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Commissioner Fox?
I just want to say thank you to the staff for working on this. I know it's been several months in the making. I, for one, am very happy to see this move forward. I, as a downtown resident, I think it's nice that we have such a variety on Clematis Street. I think this is one of the anchors for the 500 block and has a very, it's very successful and has a strong following, so I'm glad to see this moving forward tonight, and I'll be supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Any other questions, comments? Commissioner Fox, you want to make a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number 271-23.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 8.1, public hearing and second reading of ordinance number 5064-23, granting an access and utility easement to Selco Partnership DBA Verizon Wireless across city property lying south of 47th Place North.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. My name is Suzanne Burglin, the Assistant Director of Engineering for the city of West Palm Beach, and there are, have been no changes since the first reading.
Very good. Any questions, comments, commissioners? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move approval of ordinance number 5064-23.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, discussion. Hearing none, Madam Kirk, can you read the ordinance, please?
Ordinance number 5064-23, an ordinance of the city commission of the city of West Palm Beach, Florida, granting an access and utility easement to Selco Partnership DBA Verizon Wireless across city property located south of 47th Place North, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right, Commissioners, we're moving into the quasi-judicial portion of our meeting, so I need you to make disclosures. We'll start with Commissioner Fox.
As to this matter, item 9.1, I have not had experte communications, I have not received written communications, I have not conducted an investigation, I have not made a site visit, I have not received expert opinions, I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Very good. Commissioner Peduzzi?
Thank you, Mayor. As to item 9.1, I have not had experte communications, I have not received written communications, I have not conducted an investigation, I have not made a site visit, nor have I received any expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made a part of the record.
Thank you. President Warren?
Thank you, Mayor. As to item 9.1, I have not had experte communications, not received written communications, not conducted an investigation, not made a site visit, and not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Thank you. Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you. As to item 9.1, I have not had experte communications, I have not received written communications, I have not conducted an investigation, I have not made a site visit, I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Commissioner Ward?
As to item 9.1, I have not had experte communications, have not received written communications, have not conducted an investigation, have not made a site visit, and have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Thank you very much. Madam Kirk, can you swear in all witnesses, please?
Would everyone wishing to speak on item 9.1, please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Thank you. Item 9.1, public hearing of resolution number 231-23 regarding the approval of a minor subdivision and plot to create the Pink Bird Car Wash, consisting of one development tract of approximately 1.215 acres located at 879 West Executive Center Drive.
Hi, my name is Martha Carter, I'm with Michael B. Skora and Associates. We're representing the owner of the property, FCW ECD LLC. The plating of the project is required by the conditions of approval. The site plan was approved previously, and it's a boundary plat, one parcel, and it meets the city requirements. Not sure how to advance the, oh, there we go. It's located on Executive Center Drive, just southeast of Palm Beach Lakes Boulevard. It's next to the Amaco Gas Station there, and it meets all of the city's standards for code compliance for a minor subdivision. I think Eric.
Very good. Is that the conclusion of your presentation?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have any questions for the applicant before we bring staff up? Any questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you. Mr. Schneider, are you, will you come up and tell us you don't have a presentation?
Good evening, for the record, Eric Schneider, principal planner. Martha did a great job of presenting the same stuff that I would present to you, so if you have any questions, I'm here.
Staff recommends.
And staff recommends approval of this.
Are there any questions for staff? All right. Hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number 231-23, approving a minor subdivision to create the Pink Bird Car Wash plat, consisting of one development tract of approximately 1.215 acres. This motion is based upon the factual testimony presented, the application submitted, the staff report, and the findings that the plat complies with all applicable provisions of Chapter 177 Florida statutes, and is consistent with the comprehensive plan and complies with subdivision design standards set forth in Section 94-342 of the city's zoning and land development regulations.
Very good. It's been moved, is there a second?
Second, and I have a comment, Mayor, as well.
Okay. Proceed, Commissioner Lambert.
Thank you. I just wanted to make a comment that I was fortunate enough to be at the ribbon cutting of the Pink Bird Car Wash that opened near the Wawa in the South End, and I was thoroughly impressed with their social responsibility and commitment to the community, specifically their involvement of Vita Nova students and young adults as employees, and I would just hope that they would consider continuing that through their future endeavors, but it was really great to see that. So thank you so much, and please pass that on to the owners.
Okay, very good. Any other comments or questions? All right. It has been moved and seconded, so there are no comments. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay, that concludes the business portion of our meeting. We now turn to comments from the public, and I have one card here, Michael Cleveland.
Good evening, and thank you, Mayor, Commissioners, staff. Michael Cleveland, West Palm. Boy, this meeting is moving by as fast as a bright line. That's good. Last meeting, there was, on the agenda, some lots that was being, I don't know, up, you know, give them away or whatever, but there were several of them in the Pleasant City area along A. Isaac, forming along this Contempton Avenue. I'm not sure what is the plot of your plans to, for construction on those, but I simply would ask that in the construction, or whoever you're given to, that all the residents face the A. Isaac, as opposed of having any on the side of place in Twinging Street. I think according to my estimation, you may get as much as four residents across that front. There is a problem that may exist with the wall and the hedge shrubbery behind there that's city responsibilities, so there may be a buffer, fence, or something, easement may need, may need to be established in that area. So I would ask that you consider that when you give up those lots or whatever you plan to do with them. Also, I was pretty sure there was an ordinance that related to semi trucks being in the city. For years, I've been bothered with these semis at 19th and Dixie during the night, waiting for the Bush factory to open up. They're getting more troublesome now than they ever have been, so I simply would ask city staff to look into doing something to ease my pain. I need my sleep at my age. 911 has been in effect for years and years, but I wonder how many people actually died trying to dial 911 when they're having a heart attack or stroke. It may need to be looked at, I'm sure this is not the body that had something to do with it, but I'm sure there's a lot of lives have been lost. I thank you very much, have a good evening.
Thank you very much. There are no other cards, so we'll now turn to comments from the dais, beginning with Madam President.
Thank you, Mayor. A haunted car wash will be taking place at Mint Eco Car Wash and Detail Center. This will be Palm Beach County's first ever haunted car wash experience. The haunted car wash will take place at Mint Eco's brand-new location in District 2 at 1890 Palm Beach Lakes Boulevard in West Palm Beach, and the event will take place on, it's a two-night event, on Monday, October 30th, and Tuesday, October 31st. There will be free car washes, and the family-friendly hours are from 3:00 until 6:00 p.m., and there will be costumes and trick-or-treating and free candy that is given away for the children. Adults with scary costumes will, this event is free to everyone, and donations are accepted, and they will go directly to benefit West Palm Beach Police Fund. The Palm Beach International Boat Show gives back. They are offering a grant program to provide grants to nonprofit organizations in Palm Beach County to underwrite environmental and marine education programs and waterfront projects in downtown West Palm Beach. The application deadline is November 17th, so there's plenty of time to write and send in competitive applications, since the application process is easy. The link to the grant program is marinepbc.org/grant-program. And you can apply to be the next Miss South Florida Fair or Miss Palm Beach County, a scholarship competition that is taking place, and the deadline is currently underway, and the deadline is October 31st. There's a $13,000 scholarship that will be awarded. The membership requirements are available at southfloridafair.com, so I advise you to act quickly because that deadline is approaching quickly. And I would like to just extend a thank you to everyone here on the dais. Thank you so much for all of your kindness and your prayers and your support during a very difficult time. Thank you, Commissioner Peduzzi, for standing in for me during the event in District 2 at Palm Beach Lakes High School, the visioning session. It meant a lot for you all to step up the way that you did during a very challenging time of need for me, and I sincerely appreciate each and every one of you and all of the energy and positive thoughts and prayers that you sent. And I just hope that everyone continues to keep each other lifted up in prayer. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Commissioner Fox?
Thank you, Mayor. This Friday, October 20th, starting at 5:30, Whiting and Turner Contracting will be hosting a Night of Community Fun at the Heart and Soul Park. There will be free food, live music, performances, pumpkin decorating, bounce house, face painting, and a lot of other fun activities for the kids, but Whiting and Turner is also the construction company that is working on the Tamarind project, and the main mission of this event will be to share updates. I know that I've had a lot of questions and a lot of calls from neighbors around Tamarind wondering when this project will ever move to Phase 2, and there have been some issues that they've run into along the way that were unforeseen at the time, but I think it really is best for them to explain it to the neighborhood and to the community, and so I'm encouraging everyone who wants to know more or has questions, I know, or many people are exhausted by the process and losing patience, so this will be a great time to come, have some fun with your kids, and also get some of the answers that you're looking for in terms of when Tamarind Phase 2 will start. And that, again, is this Friday, October 20th, starting at 5:30 at Heart and Soul Park. The very next day, on October 21st, at 11 to 1, we will also be across the street from Heart and Soul Park with an open house for the Sticks properties that are still available. So anyone who's looking to move their business or open a new business in the historic northwest, we have two beautiful buildings that are available, and the proposal process is open now, so people from the CRA will be on hand to answer questions and to also give tours of the buildings and meet some of the neighbors. I've heard that there might be free cupcakes from Eaten Cakes if anyone needs a little bit of inspiration to stop by, but I'm looking forward to it. The tours will start at 12:30, and the open house and discussion with the CRA will start at 11:00, so 11 to 1 on Saturday, October 21st, and if anyone has questions, they can email CRA@wpb.org. And I just wanted to say that I'm very excited to hear that the Keep America Beautiful program, which is affiliated with, keep, sorry, the Keep West Palm Beach Beautiful, which is affiliated with Keep America Beautiful, has been honored with the President's Circle Recognition Award. This program only started in the last couple of years here in West Palm, so I think it's really a remarkable feat. I've been to a couple of their events, they have great volunteers, they do so much to help clean up the city, so I'm really impressed that they were able to, in these two short years, also come to, to be awarded this great honor. So thank you to everyone on the Keep West Palm Beach Beautiful team, there's probably too many to name, but we have a great dedicated staff and volunteers who are making a significant change in the city and keeping everything clean. change in the city and keeping everything clean. I also wanted to mention that I received an email today from the Albert Jewish Family Service of Palm Beach County, and they are opening two virtual support group, groups to assist anyone who's struggling during this time. They will have one dedicated program that will just be for people who are employees of Jewish organizations specifically, and another support group open to the greater community, so if anyone would like a little bit more help or safe space to, to talk about your feelings at this time, please get in touch with Albert Jewish Family Service. You can call them at five-six-one-six-eight-four-one-nine-nine-one, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Ward?
Thank you. Lots happening this week. Just as an FYI, anybody who's interested in the county's plans for Australian Avenue, they're having another meeting, October eighteenth this week, Gaines Park Community Center, starting at six. And while there is going to be a great event at the Sticks on Saturday, you can go there, and then right afterwards, you can go to Northwood Village. That's having their Fall and For Northwood Village event for a day of exploration and celebration for the upcoming fall season. During this event, residents can learn about the developments taking place in the area, and for more information, of course, you can contact my office, and in addition, I guess before you go to the Sticks, you can go to Echo Lake Park, where West Palm Beach Art Life Committee is doing a meet and greet with a local artist, where residents can learn and vote on the future artwork to be placed in Echo Lake Park. That will be October twenty-first from ten to eleven at Echo Lake Park. Thank you. That's it.
Very good. Commissioner Peduzzi?
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to send a congratulations to our police department and Seth and crew for a very successful coffee with a cop that was held on October fourth at Solento from eight to ten A. M. You had a great turnout. Everyone seemed to be, be happy, and, and it's a great opportunity for our residents to speak with our officers and really, really get to know the people that are here to protect them, so I just wanted to thank you for that, and I don't have anything to add in addition to what my colleagues have already mentioned this evening.
Thank you. Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you. I wanted to make everyone aware who lives in the El cid area in South Dixie, just from south of the Norton to Belvedere, that we are having a community meeting on November first from four to six at the Mandel Public Library, the third floor and the Hibiscus Room. As our city continues to grow, we need to find more creative ways that we can all live harmoniously together, and, and that includes being kind neighbors to our residents and finding ways that we can mitigate the, the traffic and the parking that is along the thriving South Dixie businesses, and so I just want to say thank you to staff for hosting this workshop where residents and merchants will be able to come, give their opinions, give their feedback, and we'll be having our consultants there providing the results of a recent study that was done in the area, so I encourage you all to attend if you live or have a business in that area on November first from four to six at the Mandel Public Library. The other two items that I have, you know, I thought that there, it was interesting, there's this common theme, and I think that we're all grateful when we see that residents are coming up with creative solutions, so when they identify an issue that is of concern to them, that they come to the city with solutions and ways that we can work together. So the first one has to do with the Keep West Palm Beach Beautiful, and I was excited to see the recent President Circle Recognition. I know that this has been a topic of discussion, but I hope that it can come to fruition, which would be the ability to adopt a road or, and/or adopt a park. And I know that we have talked about in the past, you know, the possibility of a friends of some of our parks in a way that we can provide maintenance and upkeep of our parks, but this might be a way that we could get that introduced, so I know that some other Keep America Beautiful affiliates have been able to implement that, but we already have some residents and stakeholders who would like to support that, should the city take that on. The second is, you know, about public safety in our neighborhoods, and I know that we've been successful in some of our neighborhoods in implementing some camera programs, so I'm excited to see that our neighbors are getting together and saying, hey, this is something we would like, we're willing to put our money where our mouth is, and to meet the city to be able to talk about these, so I, I am hopeful that that can come to fruition as well. And Officer Buxton, I'm excited to say that I have some interest in the Citizen Observer Patrol Program, so, you know, that's a way that our residents can take initiative and to help keep extra eyes on our streets, so look forward to working, Mayor, with, with your administration on some of these projects. Thank you.
Thank you. I also want to highlight the accomplishment of the Keep West Palm Beach Beautiful program, and it's being honored with the highly coveted President Circle Recognition Award for twenty-twenty-three. This is a testament to the hard work, passion, and unwavering dedication of community leaders, volunteers, and partner organizations who strive tirelessly to make West Palm Beach a cleaner, greener, and more beautiful place to live, so congratulations to all involved. Happy to say that last Tuesday, the Mayor's Jump Start Academy kicked off with its fourth cohort. A group of small business owners will come together for ten intensive weekly sessions to refine ideas, scrutinize every aspect of their business model, and receive real-time feedback from mentors, guest speakers, and coaches, and we're looking forward to hearing some tremendous success stories from those dedicated entrepreneurs. It's already been mentioned, the event at the Sticks Promenade on Saturday, October twenty-first from eleven to one, as well as, as Commissioner Ward pointed out, on the same day, at six P. M., there's a Fall and For Northwood Village Fall Celebration on Northwood Road. With respect to upcoming events, please save the date. We're looking forward to another memorable, memorable evening of jazz as part of our Inspiring Soul in the City series, and the artist this time will be Tito Puente Junior. Mr. Puente is a favorite in casinos, performing arts centers, symphony halls, and jazz festivals, and he will be performing on Wednesday, November fifteenth, at the Waterfront Pavilion. Get your tickets early, because these tend to sell out. And there is a rumor that, you know, if you come to these things, you may even hear the mayor sing. That's been known to happen from time to time. I'm not, I'm not a replacement for any of the artists, but, you know, the spirit moved me. Anyway, that concludes my remarks for the evening. I appreciate your attention and dedication to our great city. God bless each and every one of you, and God bless the great city of West Palm Beach. Good night, everyone.